Okay, a meeting called to order at six thirty-five. Taking attendance, Jason Lester.
Here.
Okay, Graham Zach.
Here.
Alvin Waters.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, and we have a caller here. This is the time for item B, if you are an elected official or representative. Or if not, item C, a public comment on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak. Please dial six to unmute yourself. Okay. All right, then we will move on to, we will go straight to item D. Discussion and possible motion for the Free DocuShred event. I think we have everything we need, but does anyone have any, anything to add that we should do at this event? Any recommendations, suggestions to bring before? The board at our February seventh meeting.
Wondering if we still have an inventory of items to give away?
We do have those and the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment will also. Be present due to the election outreach, so they will have. That, you know, run for a seat on your neighborhood council, so they will be there as well. So that's a great opportunity for us. And the flyer is starting to circulate the community, so we should have an excellent turnout by that day.
Yeah, I would just say it's important to not come back too much going on since. Focus, you know, has to be mainly on helping the people at the shred event, because it's just we can't. We can't be certain how many are going to participate all in here.
Right, so we will. They will be, just because we cannot conduct election outreach on ourselves, so. That will be their responsibility to discuss running for a seat on their neighborhood council and taking care of that part for us. So we'll be helping the stakeholders and they will be taking care of election outreach.
So we'll have somebody for election outreach at the event?
It will be, as I understand it, Gibson and maybe one other person from the department?
Okay.
Okay, so then we don't, I think we're good. We don't need anything else with that one. Okay, item E. We, this came, the reason why this came up, as you know, we had some. We've had some situations in the past which we have discussed. I was contacted by the chamber regarding the shred, I'm sorry, the. Street Fair. And it wasn't paid. And we approved it months prior. So actually, and I'm gonna, if we can go also to item H, which kind of coincides with this. The, this, this department is overseeing. Item H regarding the new neighborhood enrichment committee. And there are proposed NC reforms that some neighborhood councils will be submitting. So. The reason for the, the reason for the payment was missed is there's some personal contention. Between the president. Of the foundation, who is also the president of the neighborhood council. Of where there is a, there's a, there's a friendship there. And it's creating problems. Because, you know, when you can't speak, you don't want to speak to someone because of some other issue. It has nothing to do with us. It's outside of Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council boundaries. We are stakeholders here. We are on the board. So what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I would say, I mean, the bottom line is, I mean, this is something that we voted on. So I mean. This is something that we agreed to fund, so I mean, oh, this, I mean, it has to be paid. But I mean, this is something that I would say. Definitely needs to be acted on just because, you know, we voted on it as a for.
Right.
So I'm trying to understand this, I guess the situation is there's this new neighborhood enrichment committee. On what?
So the city council, it used to be called the Arts Parks Neighborhoods, et cetera, committee. And the chair of that committee was council member Lee.
So this is, this is through, you're saying the committee on the LA City Council?
Yes, yes, so, yes.
And, and who pays these? What we pass is through the, the city council?
Well, what we pass is those are the funds that we receive every year, you know, we have thirty-two thousand dollars. And so this, the money that we receive is taxpayer dollars. And we fund events that benefit the community, which the street fair is a great, is a great event.
So you're saying there's a conflict between?
Yes.
Who's funding this or writing the checks to us that we approve and? The L S City, someone on the L S.
And how, no, on our board.
Oh, on our board?
And, and it came to my attention, while we were on recess, actually, I received a call asking for the check. And of course, I was blindsided by that. And after the research was completed, I realized. The problem is, is that there's contention between these two individuals, but it has nothing to do with us. You know?
Well, that's, I mean, so. And, and that's why, you know, we, like, we get the notifications that your funding request has been denied, or, you know, what I've been seeing from, okay. So there's, I mean. There's gotta be someone we can reach out to. I don't, I mean. I don't know. I mean, that seems.
Well, we voted to, to pay.
Yeah.
Then, one person cannot.
Exactly.
Hold everything up, I mean. Or you can't just, because. That's. Making the voting process null and void by having one individual determine. That they're not interested in doing what we voted for and throwing a wrench in the whole thing.
Right, it's also publicity for us, you know, we, we. We don't want to be known for.
Reneging?
Bills, after we, as a board, almost, you know, we had one that mom said no, but the rest voted yes. And so. You know, I, I understand there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues going on with various neighborhood councils, but. Whatever's happening with the neighborhood council is none of our business. We, we don't care. We, we don't want to be involved in it. So what do you suggest? Like, we have an opportunity where this, this new neighborhood enrichment committee will be. Is just newly formed and. As I understand it, there are other neighborhood councils who are submitting suggestions for reforming the neighborhood councils.
Well, I mean, that's one area, but I mean, my question is, is, is it gonna deal with the immediate issue at hand?
Right, so it's kind of an A and a B situation. We, we need to make sure that moving forward, these items are going to be handled. Regardless of what the relationship is. My suggestion is if there's going to be a content contentious of nate contentious issue. Because of some bad blood or whatever it may be, that we expect a recusal. And refer Alvin to oversee the, the, the funding matter for this, if there's, you know, that type of issue.
I agree, however, I'd also think as the executive committee. And maybe Oscar as a president should reach out. To funding and, you know, I mean, straighten out. The situation has, for us as a board, that we need to, there needs to be accountability for. What we take action on and vote for and what, you know, we need the funds for that are taxpayers' dollars and our stakeholders for our community. So, you know. All of us can, but I think, you know, maybe the executive committee should take this up and. Oscar.
What I'm thinking.
Or something.
Right, well, Oscar did assure, he assured me that he has requested that all, he'd be copied. On everything that goes out. To make sure it goes out in a timely fashion, because it's, you can't have something four months behind.
Right.
So, but I did want you all to be aware of it, because we worked so well together and I wouldn't want you to be blindsided by someone saying, oh, well, yeah, you don't. You guys don't pay your bills, or, you know, any kind of, you never know who's gonna comment on what, so I just wanted you all to be aware.
So what, what's the accountability if we don't? You know, like, there, is there any accountability for who's writing these checks that is, you know, that we have the funds for that is. It is legally voted through Empower LA, through our board, through, you know, our city, our council, our neighborhood council?
Right, well, the accountability is within GHNMC, because once, once the item is approved. By the board, it is the responsibility of our treasurer. To send those forms, well, Oscar signs them and then they are sent into the city clerk. And the city clerk is the one who will send that email that says we've received a request to fund. And, and then when it's funded, the city clerk will say, you know, this item has been paid. In this case. We, we didn't think we needed to check, to be humbly honest, but in light of this recent event. We, we, we need to make sure these things are getting paid in a timely fashion.
Okay.
Two immediate issues, one credibility, people will not let us participate in anything. In the future, so we lose credibility. And our ability to do anything that involves other neighborhood councils, because they're not gonna trust us. And second is the potential for. The city to decide that they should oversee these things and take power away from the neighborhood councils. Because it's not being managed appropriately, just like when there's a, an HOA. And if something happens at the HOA, sometimes the city will actually step in and take over the HOA. And they'll take the.
Yes.
Take everything away from nature. We could potentially lose certain privileges if they're not being managed appropriately. Or properly. So, so I see two potential issues down the road for, for this behavior.
But in all honesty, I mean, I'm thinking the next step on this honestly is to take this to executive committee. Is, I mean, this is, because this is an issue that's kind of out of, so.
Or, you know, to put more immediacy on it, to shine a light on it, you know. If you want to take it to executive committee, but add it to, to the next agenda for sure, to have discussion as a board. To weigh in, because, I mean, we, you know, we need to. I mean, this needs, everything needs, there should be full transparency and accountability for what. We vote on and pass and decide to fund.
Sure.
And if it's not happening, then the whole board needs to know about it and we need to discuss it and figure out. Uh, you know, means to mediate it.
Right. Okay. All right, so we're going to. Put on.
And this also brings up the question that's come up in the past, should there be a second financial, financially responsible person? So that if something like this in the future happens, the second person can jump in and just be like, you know what? I'm gonna go ahead and take care of this and let it become an issue.
This is, I, this is something that's been asked, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, for like, like the last two years, but. Down.
Well, you know, we had the, the pandemic hit and then we really, you know, we weren't having events, so we kind of let it slide, but, you know, there's, it's a professional. It's, it's professional good sense to have a second signer. So if there's any sort of bad blood between, you know, this is our community and that's a community five oh one C three. That we work through to fund events and we need to have a good relationship with them. And if there's any sort of personal issue, it has nothing to do with us, so. I, so we'll, so we'll make a recommendation.
Yep.
To have a recusal on any. Kind of personal issues that interfere with the professionalism of them.
And, you know, I would say, again, to reiterate, anything that's outstanding that needs to be paid or. Passed due that we voted on, decided, and if it's not being done, then we need to bring it back before the board on. An agenda item to, you know, address it and take care of it.
Now, if I, now, if I recall, from what I read from the email, the issue was because. Is. Because there was no record of voting on it. I mean, isn't the, I mean, isn't the immediate remediation to vote on it again?
Well, it was on the agenda and then that was, it, we were told it was submitted and it was, but of course it was rejected now.
Because, right, because it wasn't, because it technically wasn't voted on.
Well, well, it was voted on, but, but the time, so what it is, I took the funding class. I was certified during the pandemic. I'm due to renew mine this year. And if you don't pay it within forty-five days. You have to, you have to, you know, the board has to vote on it again. It's like we went through this with one of the shred events. It was a similar situation where, you know, we, we changed it a couple of times. And there was no error here, it's just that we changed it a couple of times and the city clerk had some rules, so we had to vote again. So this is the same situation, so it's better that just, you know. People can do what they want, but for the purposes of our neighborhood council. Granada North needs to be the first and, and, and primary priority to. Board members who are serving in these key roles and so that, so that we can move, so that we have. The utmost professionalism and, and, and in a clear, you know, credibility, you know. In our community and with all those vendors we do business with.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that sounds, so, so I, so I believe we have, so we'll have a recommendation that all outstanding. If there are, I don't think there's anything outstanding, but if there is, to, for one hundred percent transparency on that. And then to notify us, you know, confirm, you know, within. It's seventy-two hours that it's been done. There's no reason for it to not be done, you know, this is priority and then. If there's other interests, so be it, but this has got to come first. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so the next one is, as you know. Effective March first, we will be required to meet in person until the, hopefully the Brown Act is. Revised. To allow for what the city council voted for, for virtual meetings. So we do have Saint Euphrasia Auditorium where we met. Graham, I don't think, well, you, you've been to Saint Euphrasia, but it's the auditorium that is where we met. So that's for the board, but for our committee meetings, we have pretty limited places where we can go. I think, I, I mean, my suggestion that comes to mind where we last, where outreach last met before. Was, we had, we, we did have Frost Middle School. But during the pandemic, they turned it into a, like a COVID center, so, so that's, so our center, that area is no more. We could use Starbucks at Knollwood in the front there, you know, if we could get that spot. And we post the agenda like normal, but we would meet there and if another member of the community happened to visit or, or join us. We, they can always pull up a chair. So we, we had, at the most, we've had two people, I believe, one from LAPD and one other stakeholder, you know, so. What, any other suggestions on that?
Our very limited commercial properties in our area and. Park is kind of weird, so. Yeah, now we've discussed it before. I've got nothing.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, one of the initial thoughts is, the only commercial space we really have is, is. Old Plaza with the Starbucks, Subway. Or, I mean, our only option is if ever school's available.
Right, we would have to apply for that again, you know, there's, there's requirements with it because of COVID, there's specific requirements that you have to. You have to clean it before, you have to wipe it down after, so. Starbucks, you know, a place like Starbucks for, I mean, for, our meetings are very efficient. We, you know, run them smoothly and quickly, so we could get by with a cup of coffee and Starbucks and. Will be done. Or, or Subway.
But the only, but the only thing though is what do we do about the situation, like, somebody wants to give public comment?
Make a, give come, public comment, do we, because as we were in person, Graham, when someone wants to speak on public comment, they speak. And, you know, we timed them one minute and then we moved on.
And then one thing that I wanted to ask too is, is, do you know if, if they're requiring us to do it hybrid?
Right now, the, the issues.
Or if they will, I mean.
Well, right now, all of that is still like underway. The hybrid is a very odd requirement, which means there would have to be. A quorum of the board present at the physical location in order to have the hybrid meeting, so it's, it's, it's. Pretty complicated situation to do it that way. I mean, ultimately, we'll see where things end up. Hopefully, we'll have the virtual option again, but this is just, I think for all of us. We know that, like, we're having this meeting this month, next month, we will be having the shred event, so that's. What we use as our meeting time, we don't need to have another meeting unless there's something should turn up. But we're, we're pretty good about not having a meeting every month, unless there's really a need. So I think we'd be probably looking at March i- if there was a need.
Well, I guess we would just be doing it as needed then.
Right, 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 but we could just, we could really just say. The recommendation from the outreach committee is for each committee to choose the location that they see fit. I mean, we don't really have to speak for them, I mean, they, they live in the community as well, so we can just make a recommendation for them to choose. Pretty much Starbucks and. Subway are it, so that, those would be their options.
Yeah, it seems like our best bet, though, I mean, unless you wanna kind of navigate the red tape of. No bookings, or.
Yeah, on the school, I mean, it's, it's very inexpensive, it, when last we did it was seventy-five dollars a year. And we can check with Mr. Chavez of Kennedy, who's the principal. And then Mr. Cho, who's the principal of Frost, so we can, we can take that to the board to see which, which ones they're interested in. Also. Van Gogh Elementary, that would be the other one.
I mean, I, I would say the schools. He is a little ideal, I mean, just as long as we understand what our obligations are.
Right, 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 but the only, the only responsibility with the schools is, is I had to call. The maintenance person janitor, just to let him know that we were finished and then they would go in and. And lock the school up.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll, so we'll think about the schools and so, so we would. We don't really need a motion on this, we can just make some recommendations and we will. We will reach out to the, the schools in LAUSD. Okay, and next one, okay, so item G. Discussion and motion regarding the NC outreach. Neighborhoods and locations, we, we actually discussed this a little bit in October. Are we okay with, like, the, for, because there's a limited budget on this? So where we've had successes as a neighborhood council was the Balboa and Rinaldi, there was a daycare center in twenty-twenty, I think it was. And then we had the car wash situation, which we, the community, we're, we're against both of those projects and we. We voted. Against those projects for the community. And the senior living development is still going on right now. And then, of course, everyone enjoys the shred event and the parade, so. But that's kind of a Granada Hills as a whole on the, on this, on the street fair and the parade, so. What, what are your thoughts on, on these advertising locations? For our, for the election outreach?
Um, I thought we discussed this in one of the last meetings, right? Don't we have a list?
We do.
It was like a country club and a plaza there, Knollwood Plaza, and then.
Right.
I can't remember, there was a couple others. But yeah, I think, I think what we came up with last time, if we have that noted, it was great.
Yeah, okay, great.
Doesn't Old Melvany one of the considerations?
Well, Old Melvany, the flats, when you walk in, you know, you, you go, you first, you could, you go right, right? But then, when you walk straight, that flat area there, that's where the department will set up the tents and. They'll have signage directing people where to go and it'll be, I mean, hopefully it'll be a beautiful day, June tenth is, is like nice before it gets to be. Sporting weather, so it should be a nice election day for us. And that's true, so we did have, so we did have Knollwood Plaza and for advertising, Knollwood Plaza, San Fernando Mission and Woodley, the shops there. And then the, the local communities, the neighborhood pockets around there. Yeah. This information we're going to give to Dunn. Okay.
Has there been any other people, stakeholders, or anyone in the community reaching out about being interested in? Being on the council or anything?
We, we received two resumes, contacted them for interviews and haven't heard, heard back. Have actually did receive four resumes from Kennedy High School. With candidates for the, the youth committee, very impressive, so Jason is chair of the youth committee, so we're going to. Work on interviewing and hopefully have them, hopefully on this next agenda, that's what we're, we're hoping to get them on there. They're very impressive because they have event experience. They also are active, I believe, at least three of them are involved in mental health. And they're four point, four point O GPAs with also, so keep your fingers crossed, I think we have some, some good.
Uh, there's a lot of achieving, achievements, a lot. A lot of extracurricular. You know, you'd see like vice president, the one year of some, some committee or something, and then the next year president, it's like. If they weren't president of something, they eventually became president. The, you're following or two years follows, a lot of. Yeah, I definitely didn't have a resume like that when I was that age.
That's great. Could use some youth, some young blood.
Yes.
My resume would have been all Nintendo related. Nothing like this.
Original NES system, right?
Yeah, I got some records on there.
Okay, all right, and so then we are on to. Discussion and status of the, the twentieth anniversary. Celebration for Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council. So, any, any input on anything yet, or are we still working on those?
So where are we at on that? Last time, we were just kind of discussing potential dates, like approximation of. You know, after the Santa Ana's kind of chill out and.
After I remember.
Yes, well, that's right.
April or May or something like that, or, I mean, at this point. Depending on the scope and how much we want involved, we want to get with it. And we kind of gotta start sooner than later, I think.
Yeah.
With it being only a few months away. You know, yeah, I don't know, we talked about a few different locations. I mean, this is something, should we bring this, you know, kind of hone in more on it now with us? And then bring something to the board, or what do you, what do you?
Right, so here's where, so here's, here's where we are today. We have our elections coming up, you know, we, we have all of that going on. And I went to, I'll, I'll start with, I did try the Odyssey. And. They don't, they didn't have anyone there, I mean, they like referred me to a, a website, like, they weren't there, so they sent me a text and said, you know. I know, I, I just had a very odd feeling about it, so I went, I contacted Knollwood and. Looked at some future dates, there were two dates. Some, a little bit further out, but away from the, the, the heat of the, of the summer. September ninth and September twenty-third around, you know, keeping in mind Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. And so. And so, um, September, it's, it's actually interesting, okay, so September ninth. Was available, and this is just to give you an idea of what, what we would be looking at on pricing and so forth. So, to hold it outside as we, uh, was, was, which was our, our desire. They only allow fifty people. So that's pretty tight, especially if we have, you know, elective representatives could take up a portion of that, should they decide to come. So, their, uh, gallery room. For a hundred people. With, and this includes, uh, a buffet, you know, food and four hours. It's a total, including taxes, of four thousand dollars. That's, I was, I, I don't know how you all feel about that price, but to me, it sounded pretty reasonable for, um. For food and, you know, dance.
A hundred people?
For a hundred people.
Yeah, that's, that's really good, actually.
And this is where?
At Noelwood Country Club, it's the gallery room for, um, a hundred people.
Oh.
How was the food there? I've never eaten there.
You know, it's, it's country club food, I mean, it's not bad, it's not like some, it's not like I made it, but.
I mean, it's good enough for like, you know. An event like this, I think would be fine.
Sure, sure, because I'm sure we'll, you know, we'll be including some, um, past presidents and, and. And videos of projects completed and things, I mean, just a, just a fun time, uh, but, so that's, so that's what, and then they require. A fifty percent deposit to start. And then, uh, three months before they require another twenty-five percent. And then, ten, ten days before they require the final headcount and, um, and, uh, final payment. It seems like they have plenty of parking, which is fantastic, uh, it's easy to find. You know, so, um, so what, so what, so what are our thoughts on, do we want a check? See if we can get in touch with, uh, the Odyssey? And we, we don't have a lot in Granada North.
Odyssey's a possibility, but it, but doesn't Odyssey seem kind of expensive, though?
Yeah, I think Odyssey would probably be, um.
I mean, we could, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, but I'm just, but, I mean, I'm just saying that, I mean, just offhand, I know Odyssey. It'll be pretty expensive, but.
Yeah.
Looking into.
Yeah. Yeah.
Events, they might have some kind of deal that they're willing to work out.
Yeah, they have a, like a banquet room, I think. Um.
They do.
It is, it is a good setup, though.
It's in the south, uh, the south room has a fantastic view because you see the whole, if it's a clear day, you can see all the way. To L A X, you know, so.
It might be worth finding out the price.
Yeah.
Reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I'll admit, I like the setup of, of the Odyssey.
Okay.
Good food, too.
They do have good food, yes, they do. Okay, so we'll, um. We will have a, so four thousand dollars is under our threshold. We have up to five thousand that we can approve as a board on our own. And then, I'll, you know, be, you know, anything, uh, above that, then we have to get special approval, so the, the four thousand dollars works really well for that. Um, not to say that they wouldn't give us a break and if we, if we needed to go over that. Okay, so let's do, um. So we have a status report there, so we will check on the Odyssey. And then we should be able to take this to the board in, um. Actually, we'll be taking it to the board in March.
March, yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, and, uh, item J, Graham, you're up.
Uh, yeah, I have to follow up with them on this, um. I haven't heard from Merica in a bit, um, I know there were some outstanding. Uh, issues with the signage that they were gonna try to take care of before a lot of the other improvements and, you know, we got the, um. Through working with them, the proposal that we got approved through RAP was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, and they said, you know, last time I followed up, that the completion would be within. It was like two to three years, it was like by twenty twenty-five.
Or twenty twenty-five.
Um, so. I looked the more into the detail, but, um, you know, there's been no updates that. She sent me, um, and that was kind of the liaison through her, um, to. The council that was dealing with RAP on the whole thing, with the proposals that they put through. Uh, because it was part of a eight point seven million dollar grant proposal, uh, upgrades and improvements on. Ten different parks throughout Los Angeles. Um, and O'Melvany was one of them, but there's also the signs, um, and B Canyon too that we were discussing and also. Um, which brings me to the point where I want to bring up, do we have a contact for the landfill, a new contact?
There's supposed to be someone who was hired, so I will find it, because I'm on that, on that, I'm the, uh, commissioner on that, so I will find out.
If you could fi- find out too with that, um, because, well, there's that, the seat that. Chris Coyle had, that.
Yes.
They should, the, whoever the new manager is or, you know, in charge of. The landfill should, you know. Be, I, I, I would imagine, or, you know, maybe we can talk to them to see if they're interested in, I, I mean, I don't. Think they're obligated to, but it would be great to have them, you know, partake in some of these meetings like Chris did or be on the board. Um, and also with what was outstanding, when we talked to Chris last time before he left. Um, that I brought up about the recycling in the parks and there was the new. Um. I don't know if it was an aid, an assembly bill. Um. Or if it was passed through the state, I think it was a state thing, um, through the governor or something that there was required, there was required to have. Recycling, um, and, you know, basically like every residence does, but also within parks and recreation. Um, which is not the case within our parks, uh, I would personally like to see that happen. And also, we had discussed that before and it seemed like everyone else was very interested that, and, and that as well. Not only, you know, to live up to the green initiatives and what we're doing as a community, but also. The benefit that it'll have on the community, um, and the parks in general, so. That's, I'd like to, you know, talk to them because I remember Chris said, yeah, by the end of. Twenty twenty-two or in the beginning of twenty twenty-two, whenever that was. That by the end of twenty twenty-two, they were, they would have to, he would have an update for us and they'd have to outfit. All the parks with, uh, recycling as well as, you know, the trash that's already there.
Okay, and I think, uh, we have our new supervisor is, um, Lindsay Horvath. So, was the, was the county oversees the, um, cause I always have to report to the, the county. Um, anything that's going on, so either Lindsay Horvath's rep. Or, um.
And she, she, she's great too, I think she'll, you know, I think we could get in touch of her, with her and. She'll, you know, address, hopefully. You know.
Yeah, I think so, she seems to be very, um, very, um, um, tuned into everything.
On top of it, yeah.
Very much so, yeah, I was very impressed, we saw her at the, uh, King Parade and she's just really jumping right in, so.
Yeah, that's great, that's great, um, so, so that's just my notes on that and then I'll follow up, I'll send a, a email to Merka and see where we are. Um, and if they have any updates from RAP and then I'll, I'll let you guys know at the, at the next, uh, board meeting.
Okay, wonderful, well, wonderful, thank you so much, Graham, so. With that, all we need is, uh, a, a motion and a second for, um, item E on the, um. On, uh, just our, our request to maintain our credibility with a, um. Full transparency of outstanding items, uh, outstanding funding items and, um, request to recuse if there is a personal conflict.
Only.
Okay, all right, and may I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Hey.
I.
I.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, unanimous there, okay, great meeting, it's, uh, seven fifteen. And we will move to committee member announcements. Any announcements? We'll start with, we'll, we'll go in alphabetical order, Graham.
Uh, great meeting and, uh, glad we're tackling some of this stuff. Uh, looking forward to the next board meeting and, um, hope everyone's enjoying the new year.
Okay, all right, and, uh, Mr. Lester?
No, uh, announcements, good to see everybody as usual and, uh. Yeah.
And Mr. Waters?
Um, nothing for me, just, you know, nice to see everyone and definitely a productive meeting and, you know, look forward to the next.
Okay, wonderful, and for me, thank you for being a wonderful committee and, uh, so I guess we will see each other in person at the shred event. On the eighteenth. So thank you very much, gentlemen, for a wonderful meeting and have a great evening, Graham, um, travel safely, have a great.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye-bye.